The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Tebow, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the joint meeting on Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. Mayor Jeff Cagiano is not feeling well tonight, so I will be chairing the meeting, and I ask you to all send your wishes for a speedy recovery. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would like the council and Board of Finance Commissioners to introduce themselves. We're going to start with Sue over here to my left. We'll go around, and then we'll go online.
Sue Tyler, City Council, District 2.
Sebastian Panieto, City Council, District 1.
Andrew Howe, City Council, District 3.
Jolene Lucetani, City Council, District 1.
Jaclyn Olson, City Council, District 2.
Marie O'Brien, Board of Finance.
John Mays, Board of Finance.
Online?
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
David Mikowski, Board of Finance.
Mark Whitford, Board of Finance.
Glenn Heiser, Board of Finance.
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Okay, thank you, and I'm Cheryl Tebow. Okay. Item number one, approval of minutes of the regular joint meeting of November 9, 2022.
I'll move the minutes.
Okay, we have a move. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is the consent agenda calendar, items A through D. Is there anybody who would like to pull an item out of the consent agenda? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, we have Sue moving. John, you want a second?
Sure.
Okay, okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And number four, we call up our comptroller, Diane Waldron, for her monthly report. Thank you.
Just to make sure it's on. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things to report tonight. I think you did have my report, and I think one of the good things is the assessor did complete the supplemental motor vehicle tax list, and those bills will be going out for January 1st. Even at the 32.34 mil rate, which we have to abide by by state statute, we're capped on the motor vehicle tax bills. We anticipate we will generate approximately $500,000 more than what we had budgeted. The supplemental has been, over the last couple of years, come in pretty strong. So I think when we look at the budget for this coming year, we should take a good look at the trends on that and see if any adjustments can be made. It's one of those things, you don't like to chase revenues, but the last couple of years, the supplemental has come in pretty, pretty strong. As far as the other tax revenues, really nothing to be concerned about there. Current revenue is coming in pretty consistent as last year. Prior year is slightly behind, but again, nothing to be too concerned with. And you do have the charts that the tax collector provides of where we are at the end of November. Building permit revenue, right now it's at 55% of the budget. Last year was at 58. Just one thing to point out, we did increase the budget estimate for this year, so we're kind of pretty much in line with where we were last year. We collected $713,000 this year and $711,000 last year. So again, pretty much in line. And the conveyance taxes, as has been reported previously, is well over budget, primarily because of that one huge conveyance that we received a couple of months ago. State grants, I did report last time that we were anticipating from the state, the municipal revenue sharing grant. We did receive that. It was $1.2 million. We had not anticipated that during the budget process. So that is surplus revenue that we can look at at the end of the year. And it is also something else that we can look at to budget for next year, which is very good considering we have a lot of issues with revalue and the budget going into next year. So that's very positive news there. Nothing really to report on the expenditures. Like I said last time, we are watching the commodities and the fuel costs carefully. And I'll provide you with a better update as we get into the budget process and start getting other estimates in from the departments where we are there. The ARPA funds, we are continuing to finalize all the contracts. It has been quite a task, and I do want to say that UHY has been phenomenal to work with. The staff that they have, that all of the drawdowns that are coming in and all the contracts, they make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. And I have a very high comfort level that all of the compliance with the state grants, meeting the Treasury guidelines, are being met. That being said, we have actually dispersed $1.2 million to the subrecipients. That's not including city projects. So through last week, the total was $1.2 million that has been dispersed. So that is something that we've pretty frequently right now are releasing funds on a weekly basis for that. Our next quarterly report is due in January, so January 31st, we'll have the report through December on the ARPA funds. There is one completed project, which I think most of you already know about, the Rockwell Park project for the fitness pads that opened last week. So that actually, I think, is the first city project that's completed. I do want to say the June 30th audit is moving 2022. I have a draft. The draft is in partner review, so we do hope that it will be issued within the next week. That's what we're hoping for. You never know what happens when it gets to that level, but they have everything that they need to, from us anyway, to move forward. So we do not anticipate any extensions like we had last year. And I know the auditors have been working really hard on that as well. But I do want to announce that we did receive the GFOA award for the 21 audit. That came in just a couple of days ago. So we're happy, so now we can actually include that in the next report. Otherwise, we would not have been able to do that. And just publicly, I just want to really thank my staff, Rob Emanuel, Jessica Pilgrim, and Julian Martin, have worked really hard this year and also last year to meet all of the requirements. The requirements have grown every year with the audit. We just keep adding pages. So there's a lot of work that goes into it, and I know that they work very diligently and very hard to make sure that the auditors get everything they need and couldn't do it without them. So I just want to say thank you to them and congratulate them for this award as well. The budget, the 23-24 budget process has started. The instructions went out to all the departments, and we will be beginning review of them after January 13th. That's the due date. And we will be scheduling capital improvement program committee meetings soon. We're looking at probably the first week of February for that. So Jody will probably reach out to those that are members to start scheduling those. So that's where we are. Any questions?
Any questions for Diane? Hearing none, could I have a motion to put her report on file?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you so much, and congratulations on the award. So it's been brought to my attention that I skipped item three, so I would like to go back to item three to transfer $20,000 with the Public Works operating budget to purchase two Mason dump trucks.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other business proper to come before said meeting? Hearing none, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, and happy holidays to our Board of Finance members that are with us right now.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Council will start in five minutes. Good evening, and welcome to the City Council meeting for December 13th, 2022. I am Cheryl Tebow, and I am filling in for Mayor Jeff Cagiano, who is feeling under the weather tonight. So I ask that you send him all your speedy wishes for a quick recovery. And would you now join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For our moment of reflection, there have been three individuals that served the community that have recently passed on, and I would like to have us have a moment of silence to remember Ron Messier. So former National Guardsman, former City Council member, and was also on the Board of Finance and Board of Education. Larry Amara was a retired principal from the Plymouth and Terryville School System, but was also on our Bristol Board of Ed and served as the chair for many years. And then we had Joe Wilson, who served 10 years on the City Council as well. So all three have given of service to the community. So could we have a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Before I turn this over to Marina, item B is we have a wonderful presentation next. So I am going to call Representative from the Bristol Parks Recreation and Youth Services up forward. We have the gold medal award presentation. So Josh, can I put this in your hands?
Sure. Well, let me start off here. Good evening, everyone. It's a real pleasure to be here. My name is Bill Folsch, and I am the immediate past president of the American Academy for Parks and Recreation Administration, which is a group of public administrators of park and recreation departments throughout the country. It's my great honor to be here tonight to represent the academy, to congratulate the city of Bristol, Department of Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Community Services before the community's leadership unit tonight for their achievement as a national finalist in the National Gold Medal Program for 2022, the year just passed. I'm also pleased to represent our partners in that award program, the Musco Lighting Company and the National Recreation and Park Association, both of which help the academy in the delivery of this prestigious award every year. Bristol is one of 24 community agencies and military bases to be selected as finalists in 2022. The program is the nation's premier recognition program for park and recreation service quality. The award honors public parks and recreation agencies, state park systems in the U.S., and military installations worldwide that demonstrate excellence in long-range planning, resource management, fiscal practice, innovative approaches to delivering superb park and recreation services to its constituents. Every year, the finalist agency is recognized for meeting very difficult demands of delivering those services. And through the COVID-19 pandemic, we know that park visitors and program participants relied heavily on our nation's park and recreation agencies for physical, mental, and emotional support during those difficult years. And 2021, 22 is no different. It's a very difficult time. But it is my pleasure tonight to commend the elected officials of the city, the commissioners of your park board, your youth commission, and your arts and culture commission, and the outstanding work of Dr. Maderos and the Parks and Recreation staff for their excellence, and to also congratulate the residents of your city for supporting such a wonderful program. Achieving finalist status is an incredibly difficult challenge, and it's clear that our group of independent judges, who looked over all of the applications this year, recognized that the city of Bristol is an outstanding example of service delivery. I want to thank you for the opportunity to attend tonight and recommend to congratulate the department for their great achievement. Josh?
Thank you, Bill. I just want to thank the entire Academy of Park and Recreation Administration for selecting the City of Bristol Parks Recreation, Youth, and Community Services Department for this prestigious honor. Our entire team works incredibly hard, oftentimes seven days a week, providing top-tier parks, programs, and services for the residents of Bristol. We maintain and manage nearly 800 acres of public park space, the second-largest amount of acres of parks per capita in Connecticut. We organize dozens of community events, including last week's Night of Lights at Page Pool. We offer essential childcare services with summer camps, almost 2,000 Bristol kids, popular summer concerts at Rockwell Park that reach over 4,000 annually. We teach over 2,500 kids in Bristol essential life-saving skills through our swim lesson program. We coordinate the rental of over 65,000 hours of organized park use for our community athletic groups and nonprofits, and we provide over 825 hours of counseling services for Bristol youth and families, just to name a few. I want to thank Mayor Jeff Cagiano, the Bristol City Council, as well as our Parks, Youth, and Arts and Culture Commissions that volunteer and support our work throughout the year. I'm just so proud of our team's accomplishments to really make Bristol a great place to live, work, and play. And I'm so pleased that our entire department is being recognized at a national level. So thank you for being here and for giving us this opportunity. So thank you.
Josh, would you like to introduce who you have up here with you?
Yes, please.
And if you have any other members of your staff or your board here, please?
Yes, I want to, of course, acknowledge Sarah Larson is our deputy superintendent. She's instrumental in all the work that we do, as well as Bob Verrito, who is the vice chairman of our board. And of course, Andrew Howe is our Parks Board liaison. Cheryl, you are our Arts and Culture Commission liaison, and Jolene as our Youth Commission. So we really appreciate it. I think that's everybody here tonight with the department. But again, we can't do it without the support of all the departments in Bristol, from HR to comptrollers and everyone that supports us along the way. So thank you, guys, for being here and being part of our accomplishment.
Well, on behalf of the city, I want to thank you, your staff, the park board, and even the academy. I love to say that, I'd like to thank the academy. Always wanted to say those words. But for all the effort that you do, you talk to any city resident, and they claim our park department, rightly so, is the best. And it's through the dedication of your staff and yourself that we can brag about that. So thank you for giving us that opportunity to brag about our park system.
Thank you.
I am wearing my pen tonight, too.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Just for you.
Thank you. Before we go on to approval, I didn't have the City Council members introduce themselves. So Sue, would you kindly start the honors, please?
Sue Tyler, City Council, District 2.
Sebastian Panieto, City Council, District 1.
Andrew Howe, City Council, District 3.
Jolene Lucetani, City Council, District 1.
Jaclyn Olson, City Council, District 2.
And I'm Cheryl Tebow, City Council, District 3. So I am going to ask Marina to going to turn the agenda over to her to introduce the items as we go forward.
Approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting of November 9th, 2022, and the special City Council meeting of November 14th, 2022.
Can we have?
Please approve.
Okay, Jackie? Maybe we have a second?
Second.
And Sebastian? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. She stepped away. So item number three, are there any members first in chambers from the public that would like to address the council? Seeing none, are there any members or there anybody online joining us through Zoom that would like to address the council? Okay, so we can move on to number four. Oh, somebody's raising their hand. Where? Oh. Oh, she did, all right. All right, so Marina, can you turn on our microphone? Jamie, can you hear us?
Oh, I don't think I raised my hand.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Jamie. Well, thank you. Okay. So we're going to start with announcements. I'm going to stay consistent and start with Sue. Would you have any announcements this month, please?
Nothing specific. I just want to, on a very cold night tonight, just remind everyone that our homeless population has increased significantly this year. And anyone who is trying to help someone who is homeless, the appropriate path to take is to call 211. 211 is what opens that door and gets the process going to help place someone who does not have shelter into one of our shelters in the area. That's all.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Yes, I just want to note that this Saturday, December 17th, at noon, members of the City Cemetery Commission and some great volunteers will be at the Lewis Street Cemetery to participate in this year's Wreaths Across America ceremony. This takes place nationwide and honors our veterans by laying a wreath of remembrance on the graves of our fallen heroes, along with reading the names of our veterans out loud. Parking is available at the United Pentecostal Church, and I want to thank them for offering that parking up to us. And also, thank you to Linda Arbman, a member of the Cemetery Commission, for doing a lot of work and organizing this really throughout the whole year, going into the end of this year, so that we have wreaths to lay for the veterans at a local cemetery. Thank you.
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
I just have one. The Bristol Parks Rec and Youth Services are holding their annual holiday gift-giving program. They are looking at very high numbers of families this year who are in need. So anything anyone can donate, they are looking for gifts for older kids, teenagers. Gift cards are also accepted. If you're looking for more information, please visit www.bristlerec.com. And that's it.
Jackie?
I have a couple. The Commission for Persons with Disabilities meets tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m. in Room 3 of the library. The topic will be what it's like to be deaf in a hearing world. Members of the greater Bristol deaf community will be present to answer pre-submitted questions. This will certainly be an hour worth attending. It should be a worthwhile meeting. The next announcement I have is the Senior Center has posted the 2023 trip schedule, which is open to the general public. The trips begin in April and go to December. And the trips are scheduled for California, Southern Maine, Saratoga, Lake George, and various other locations. So if you're interested, contact the Senior Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. I do have a couple announcements as well. Last month, you may remember that Macy Hopkins, Little Miss Mom, joined us here at the council to introduce her project. And since that, with the help of her family, she had collected in return 11,120 cans and bottles and used those funds to purchase 100 toys for the Bristol Police Department's toy drive. So congratulations to Little Miss Mom Macy. Job well done, and we can all learn from her example. On Facebook, for those residents that are not aware, there is a website called Bristol, Connecticut Holiday Lighting Contest and Voting. This is a Facebook page in which you can vote for your favorite light display in Bristol. There are 16 entries, and if you like the page, you can vote up through the 18th. You don't even have to drive around town. They've posted the pictures online, but it also may give you some options to bring your families out to see some lights. And lastly, the Grace Food Pantry has asked me to announce that the food pantry will be open the next three Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to noon. This includes both Christmas Eve morning and New Year's Eve morning. So if you have a need, you are welcome, or please share with those you know who have a need. Thank you.
So next is the consent calendar. There's 13 items.
Does anybody have any item they would like to pull? We have items A through M. Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And reports and committee reports?
Okay, we're going to start with the Real Estate Committee, which is items A, B, C, and D. And Sue, would you bring us through those, please?
Absolutely. Okay, starting with A. Okay, I make a motion that it is hereby moved in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-24, that the city of Bristol refer to the Planning Commission for its report on the proposed donation of lots, properties known as Lot 98-1 Frederick Street, Assessor's Map 43, Lot 3 Broad Street, Assessor's Map 40, and Lot 96 Twining Street, Assessor's Map 43. It is hereby further moved that this matter be referred to the Water Department, Board, Parks Department, and the Public Works for their input.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Second.
Do we have a second? A second, thank you. I'm glad you guys are here. Okay, Sebastian, seconded that. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Okay. I was just going to, just to remind everyone that this is through the Real Estate Committee, and we have a citizen looking to donate these three different lots. We've actually taken a couple of walking tours, and so that's what this is in relation to.
Any discussion? Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, please.
Okay, so B. I make a motion to hereby move that the city of Bristol approve the lease agreement by and between the city of Bristol landlord and the Bristol Burlington Health District tenant for the portion of the property located at Douglas A. Beal Senior Community Center in Bristol, Connecticut, for a one-year term commencing January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, with a one-year option to renew. This represents an increase of 2% per year. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $54,584.32 per year, or $4,548.69 per month for each month beginning January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, which is based on the rental of 3,136 square feet at $17.41 per square foot. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and review and/or review any necessary documents. and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Sue, anything you want to add?
This is just Bristol Burlington Public Health has rented space down off of Stafford Avenue next to the Senior Center. And we, as the Real Estate Committee, have agreed to extend the lease for at least another year. We want to be able to revisit this at the end of the year, once we kind of move back into our home over at City Hall and see how all the different departments play out in the space. So this is just renewing their lease for the one year with the increase, because we do have increased costs that we're experiencing right now.
Any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, please.
Okay. Okay. I hereby, make a motion, I hereby move to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to renew a lease agreement with the Bristol Police Mutual Aid Incorporated and/or its assigns for city-owned property located at 131 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, for a term of two years commencing on or about January 2023 through on or about December 2024. The total rent paid for the tenant shall be $1 per year. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council's office to effectuate the same.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Any questions?
This is for the police gym that's located over at 131 North Main, and this has been a longstanding agreement and practice where they pay $1 a year to use the space. And they have their gym there, and it's a win-win for everyone.
Hearing no other discussion or questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, item D.
Okay. Okay. I make a motion, I hereby move that the City of Bristol accept the offer from Taylor Witten and Michaela Revard or their assigns in the amount of $6,000 for city-owned property identified as Assessors Map 10, Lot Number 12, Waterberry Road. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Okay.
A little background on this one. This is a lot that the city has had for sale a couple of different times. It is a very challenging lot, because previous owners, before we obtained this piece of property, fence lines that were on other properties have extended onto our property. Our brokers had this up for sale for the last several months, and because of the challenges with, it's not real clear, somebody looking at it, what exactly that they're purchasing. We've basically, we've come to this agreement with the couple who live next door, who are, would be most affected by this, to actually purchase this piece of property. It is really the best use for this piece of property. So we are not only going to get it off the city rolls, but the young couple who live next door are going to be able to improve their lot, and we're going to be able to get it back on the tax roll.
Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next eight items are from the Salary Committee. Whereas I am the chair of the Salary Committee, and because I'm chairing this meeting, I've asked both Jackie and Sue, who share or are on the committee with me, to introduce the motions, and we'll discuss them as we go. So, item E, Jackie, could you make a motion for, please?
Sure. I hereby move to approve a change to step advancement for non-bargaining employees hired after December 13, 2022, to occur on their anniversary date.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. This basically is what it says, that if an employee, and this is, all these, these eight items deal with the non-bargaining group as well. So if an employee is hired right now, before, if we don't approve this, and if an employee is hired on December 1, come January 1, they get a step increase after only being here a year. This changes it so that we have a full year of service before they move to the next step. And it's very typical what you see out in private industry, so that they'll serve a year first. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, please.
I move to approve removal of the controller position from the non-bargaining salary schedule effective July 1, 2022.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Because the controller's position has its individual contract, we felt it didn't make sense to be in the step series for the non-bargaining. It's very similar to the fire chief, the police chief. And so the individual, any kind of increases will be worked out individually in her or his contract. Right now, we have Diane. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item G, please.
I hereby move to approve a decrease to the number of steps on the non-bargaining salary schedule from seven to four, effective July 1, 2022.
Thank you. The original step schedule for the non-bargaining group was seven steps. Typically, because of the level of professionalism that is contained within these individuals, it's very rare to find a competitive salary that we would bring somebody in. And historically, nobody has been brought in on Step 1 or 2. They basically have been brought in at a Step 3 or 4. This also reduces the number of steps after that point. So we felt it was best to start. We took the first three steps off completely, and so employees will be hired in at the former Step 4, which is now Step 1 and progressed for four years through the step program. We felt it was more representative of where we'll hire employees in, and made better sense going forward, and simplified the process. Any questions? Did we have a second on that, by the way?
Second.
Thank you. Sorry, I jumped the gun again. I'm a newbie. Okay, any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the next one is item H, please.
I hereby move to approve a general wage increase of 3% for non-bargaining employees as presented retroactive to July 1, 2022, and to refer to the Board of Finance for Funding.
Second.
Thank you. This simply is what's been done in the past, that once the BPSA contract has been finalized and the increase known, that same increase has always been applied to the non-bargaining group and retroactive, because that contract was just finalized in this quarter. So it's just applying that same rate to these employees as well. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Sue.
I hereby move to approve a freeze to wages for positions in Non-Bargaining Salary Code 8 from July 1, 2022 to July 1, 2023.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. This move is basically made because there were some inequities in the salary scale that have existed for some time. This will give us the opportunity to correct those with one of the other motions that's coming up further, so that like positions are treated the same, at the same rate. So this, again, is to correct an imbalance that has existed for some time in the salary scale. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item J.
I hereby move to approve a $5,000 wage adjustment to the non-bargaining salary schedule for positions as discussed, effective January 1, 2023, and to refer to the Board of Finance for Funding.
Second.
Second. Did I miss one? No, that was J. That was J. Okay, thank you. Where this came from is, again, fairness and equity. After the BPSA contract was negotiated a few years ago and accepted by both the bargaining unit and the city, there was a $5 increase, a $5,000 increase given to every step. What this did is it created an imbalance and a wage compression issue between the groups. And so this, again, is bringing, again, a fairness issue to the non-bargaining group, so that we don't have such wage compression. Many in the non-bargaining groups are supervisors of those in BPSA, and so this brings those steps back in line. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. K, please.
I hereby move to approve an upgrade to the position of Director of Public Works from Salary Code 7 to Salary Code 8, and the incumbent Director of Public Works to Salary Code 8, Step 4, effective January 1, 2023, and refer to the Board of Finance for Funding.
Second.
Second. Again, this is just bringing in line what the duties represented by that position of the Director of Public Works in comparison to other counterparts in the salary schedule, Group 8, and aligning those positions so that they're fairly inequitably matching in salaries. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item L.
I hereby move to approve an upgrade to the position of Personnel Analyst from Salary Code 1 to Salary Code 2, effective January 1, 2023, and to refer to the Board of Finance for Funding.
Second. And in this position, this upgrade recognizes the additional duties that have been assigned to this position, taking on more tasks that align more in the market of what other communities may pay for the talents associated with this position. And so this is basically bringing this position to where it should be, should we have to replace or recruit, and adequately reward the employee for the duties they've assumed. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jackie and Sue. Okay.
And next is unfinished business?
Starting with Sue. Any unfinished, uh-uh, unfinished business?
No.
Thank you.
None.
No.
None.
I have none as well.
And new business? Sue?
No.
Okay.
I do have a motion here in regards to the Sessions Building project. The land bank met with ECD and the mayor about a month ago to provide some updates on their progress. So on that note, I move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute the land bank agreement by and between the City of Bristol and New Colony Development Corporation, subject to final review by the Corporation Council.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Wants to provide any additional info.
Thank you.
Back in September, I was here. The City Council approved the, two motions that night, back in September. Sorry, I got a little thing going on, I think. The council approved that the City of Bristol be allowed to, quote-unquote, guarantee our $2 million state grant that we received for the cleanup of that building. The same night, we also approved a motion to eventually transfer the tax liens from the, what we call the Sessions Building, to our land bank. We've been, I think the land bank was here that night. We've been working with the land bank for years on this. The cleanup grant is actually the land bank's grant. One thing that we didn't do that night, because we weren't quite ready, is as part of the land bank's work to receive funds from that $2 million state grant, it needs to submit to the state what they call a land bank agreement, which is agreement between the city and the land bank, basically laying out some of those items that were approved that night. The land bank is just being finished up. Our Corporation Council's been so working diligently on that. So that's the purpose of this motion. I apologize for coming up sort of on the floor tonight. Almost done with it. Corp Counsel, you may have something to say on that.
Let me just add that it's essential that this motion pass, because if you don't, you're going to be having the discussion that you don't like to have, which is how come we're paying for carrying charges on that facility while we wait for something to occur down the road? So getting the motion adopted this evening, having it prepared, we've been going back and forth with language changes for, I don't know, probably the last month, back and forth. We have a very clean agreement. The only item is that we have to wait for the state to sign off on the budget that's attached by the land bank to the state of Connecticut. So we're waiting for that component to come back. As soon as it's done, we'll be ready to execute the document, and it's in a form that we're quite comfortable with.
Any questions? So, some of the carrying costs include, like, fuel charges for right now and so forth?
Yeah, and we're, and we're very worried about it, since, you know, last night was 10 degrees or something. And, you know, the oil in that building costs a lot of money, the electric charges. Those of you that have ever been in that building know that there's a elevator system that's operated by water, something you don't ever see. So we're a little concerned, and the quicker we can get this thing, the property moved over to the land bank, the quicker the remediation can occur. And I think it was during last month's report that you heard that the land bank believes that within a matter of 60, 90 days, something like that, the interior cleanup can be completed. And then we just have to wait for nice weather in the spring to complete the exterior work. So hopefully, it's not a project that'll last a very, very long time, but you never know.
Sebastian, did you have a question?
No, I just, thank you for the further.
Sue?
Through the chair. Do we still have our caretakers on premises?
Yes. Although we'd like to get them moving as well.
True, but they are helping to caretake the property, and it was very cold last night.
Yeah, they're very important.
I do see various lights on, so I know that they're checking the building, and it does give, lets people know that somebody is in there monitoring the building.
I know there's oil in the tank, because I just talked to one of the caretakers. So fortunately, we're not in the hook for that right now.
Anybody else?
For now, right.
I was going to ask the same question Sue did.
Very good. All right, then, we have a motion, a second, and we've had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other new business, Sebastian?
No, thank you.
Andrew?
No.
No?
I do not, but can I go back to committee reports? Because I didn't, I failed to ask if any other committee had something they wanted to report on, and I wanted to give everybody the opportunity to. So I'd like to go back to committee reports, because we only did real estate and salary. Are there any other committee reports that somebody has? Just Jackie?
Okay. Jolene does. Okay.
During our S.R.A. meeting on December 1st, we discussed how the main focus should be to move forward with the HVAC upgrades for Chippins Hill Middle School. There was a motion that was made to approve HF1s to move forward with this project. We also discussed how there may be a chance that we will not have the funds to do both Chippins and Hubbell HVAC upgrades. Therefore, Chippins became the priority, and we brought this motion to the Board of Education, where it was approved last week. Also, the Board of Education meeting, at the meeting last week, the board unanimously, I can't say that word, sorry, voted on the final redistricting map for the 2023 plan. All these final plans were presented to the families, so they could take a look at them. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Jackie?
Yes, I just wanted to report the expenditure for the Bames, from the Bames Building Committee. As of November 2022, the amount spent for the school was $59,372,235 and a few pennies. And the amount received from the state is $19,235,463.
Thank you. Andrew?
Just quickly, as they're running out the door, Dr. Maderos is running out the door. I just wanted to say thank you. We had an amazing event that we crunched into about two weeks. Sarah still here? She's gone too. Well, thank you to your whole department, to the Parks Board, everybody. The event was great.
Tell people what event.
Oh, I'm sorry, the tree lighting ceremony. Night of Lights, we're calling it, right?
Okay, anything else? Okay, very good. Sorry about that, guys. You know, we'll bring the mayor back next month, and we'll be good. So we've done new business, so item number nine, resignations, that's where we are, Marina.
Yep.
Okay, are there any this month?
So I have a couple, except I did not get an original signature for one, so I'm not sure if that applies. But one of them is Kenneth Lundquist Jr. for the ARPA Task Force. And Shannon Wellburn for Persons with Disabilities Commission. And not sure if this one, I just received this one today, so...
Did it come via email, or?
Nope, it's original.
Okay.
So it's Christopher Wilson from Board of Education.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion? Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept and send a letter of thank you to the residents.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, appointments. So there are several, and some of these, I'm going to suggest we approve them all. If it's a mayor's appointment, just tell me it was, okay? So, the ordinance committee to replace Jacqueline Olson with Sebastian Paniotto. I can't, fuck my, I got it right. Stumbled all night. As City Council member. Could I have a second? Motion to approve in a second, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bristol Housing Authority to replace Jacqueline Olson with Andrew Howe as City Council Liaison.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Energy Commission to replace Jacqueline Olson with Andrew Howe as City Council Liaison.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public Works Board to replace Sebastian Paniotto with Jacqueline Olson as City Council member.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Aging Commission to appoint Ellen McCusker to replace John Odell, term to expire March 2023, and to appoint Jacqueline Olson as City Council Liaison.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. American Rescue Plan Act to replace Kenneth Lundquist Jr., resigned, with Jennifer Van Guider, no term.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bristol Housing Authority to reappoint Brian Strucinski, term to 12/27.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Economic and Community Development to reappoint Carolyn Verikas, term to 12/25, to reappoint Michael Mezzarelli, term to 12/25.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Firehouse Building Committee to announce David Makowski as Liaison for the Board of Finance.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Housing Code of Appeals to reappoint Alan Marco, term to 12/25, to reappoint Richard Harlow, term to 12/25.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this is a mayor's appointment, so I don't need a vote on this one. Inland Wetlands Commission to replace Renato Ortiz with Gregory Klimic, alternate member, resigned 8/22, unexpired term to 1/24.
Move approval.
Oh, no, I don't need that one, but thank you. I'll let you do the next one. Board of Library Directors to replace Jerry Betts, resigned, with Kimberly Blazorjak, unexpired term to January 24.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Parks Commissioners to reappoint Sandra Bogdansky, term to 12/25.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. To appoint Tom Lozier as Code Enforcement Hearing Officer, open-ended.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, there was another park on the back page. Sorry about that, guys. So, this is still going to be Board of Parks. To reappoint Robert Larson, term to 12/25, to reappoint Cynthia Donovan, term to 12/25.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Police Commissioners to replace Scott Rosado with Dean Kilborn, term to 12/25.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Dean's here. Good to see you, welcome. Okay. I didn't miss anybody else who's here that I read off? No, I don't think so. Okay, Sewer Commission to reappoint Sean Dunn, term to 12/25.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Water Commissioners to reappoint Sean Dunn, term to 12/25.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Zoning Commission to replace Brian Skinner with Joseph Calida, alternate member, resigned, unexpired term to 12/25, and to reappoint Eileen Abrams, alternate member, term to 12/25.
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and the next one, I'm going to have a motion on. This is this one, and this is the Town Clerk to announce term of Marina Bigos as Acting Town Clerk, term began 11/16/2022 through January 31, 2023. And Andrew, could I have the motion?
I'd like to move to reconsider the appointment of Marina Bigios as Acting City Clerk. So I need a second.
Okay, you want to do, yeah.
Could we have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Yes.
I do. Marina discovered that the Connecticut Secretary of State requires not only a start date, but an end date for temporary appointments. Her effective start date was November 14th of '22. I will offer another motion to make her term until January 31st of 2023. And with that motion, I move that Marina Bigios, whose term as Acting City Clerk commenced on November 14th of 2022, and remain our Acting City Clerk until January 31st of 2023.
Okay, so that's a motion. We had kind of already a second. Who sent the last one?
Second motion.
Okay.
It's actually supposed to be 11/16/22.
Does that one say 11/14? It says 11/14, mine says 11/16. So amend to 11/16/2022 through...
I'd like to make a motion to amend the...
Well, no, just reread it. Okay.
So I move that Marina Bigio, whose term as Acting City Clerk commenced on November 16th, 2022, and will remain our Acting City Clerk until January 31st of 2023.
Okay. I have a...
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and that is it for appointments. Okay. Okay, Marina, take us on.
So 11, approval of change orders for Damato Downs, a joint venture for the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School totaling $6,209.94.
Could I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, go ahead, Marina.
Did you say something?
She's conferring with...
I don't know, we cleared out the room.
I know. It always happens after appointments. Was it something I said?
No.
You messed up somewhere.
Want to make sure we didn't?
Is she reading the motion? We've already passed the motion on number 11, but can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So, like, the school is done and open? Like, how much longer do these change orders keep coming in?
Jackie, is your committee done?
No.
Okay, so there could be... There's probably a punch list, my guess is.
It's like 99.9% done, so...
Gotcha.
Once they get through the punch list and pay off the retainers to the contractors, then it will close out, but we'll see if we can get you a date. Jackie, if you can find that out.
Yeah.
Marina, is there something we had to change? Okay, so we're on item number 12, and I'll let you read 12, and then there is a motion in here that I'll need somebody to pull up and be ready to read, so go ahead.
Approval of...
Oh, the handout. Okay.
Go ahead. Approval of condemnation amount from State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for rehabilitation of Bridge Number 04488 Mellon Street over the Poughkeepsie River, and to authorize the mayor, or Acting Mayor, to execute any necessary documents and refer to Corporation Council.
Thank you. And they prefer us to read the handout that was passed out versus the one in the agenda. So who's reading this, Sue? Okay, thank you.
I hereby move that the City of Bristol accept the proposed acquisition amount of $4,950 from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation of Bridge Number 04488 Mellon Street over the Poughkeepsie River. This settlement is for the area west of the bridge. I further hereby move that the City of Bristol accept the proposed acquisition amount of $3,675 from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation of Bridge Number 04488 Mellon Street over the Poughkeepsie River. This settlement is for the area east of the bridge. I further hereby move that the mayor, or Acting Mayor, be authorized to sign and execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same, this transaction, and that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council's office.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 13?
Approval of amendment to the Queensberry Archery and Malik Contract for Site Investigation Services for Northeast Middle School Project for $30,800.
Okay, and could I have that, Jolene?
Sure, I make a motion to approve the amendment to the Queensberry, Arkari, and Malik Contract for Site Investigation Services for the Northeast Middle School Project in the amount of $30,800.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And 14 is executive session to discuss litigation matter of Adalbrook Community Services versus City of Bristol, Superior Court, Docket Number HHB-CV-19-6052659-S, and to take any action as necessary.
Okay, and so, could you tell us?
Members of our office and the City assessor.
Okay, very good. So I have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, our typical, our usual meeting room? Upstairs, okay. We will be back, thank you. Okay, could I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All in, any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion?
No votes.
Oh, no votes were taken while in executive session, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
I move that the litigation matter, Adalbrook Community Services, Inc. versus City of Bristol, Superior Court, Docket Number HHB-CV-19-6052659-S, as in SAM, be settled by stipulated agreement, which includes a $2,500 tax abatement in favor of Adalbrook Community Services, Inc. for taxes paid on the 2018 grand list taxes, and the Corporation Council be authorized to execute the stipulation to judgment on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Could I have a second? Second.